All right, everyone, it is 6:06, so we're gonna get started. Kevin, if you don't mind pulling up the... you don't need this.
You want the PowerPoint right now?
Yeah, well, go ahead and put it up on the screen. This is the public hearing for the Pathways to Removing Obstacles to Housing Grant Application that RiverCog is putting together. Kicking things off is going to be Executive Director Sam Gold.
Thank you very much. You can hear me, right?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, all right, and thank you Deputy Director, making two fuss. So, thank you for joining us this evening. I want to first set forward what this is, who we are, if you don't know who we are, and what we're trying to do tonight. So, yeah, here's the overview. First, I'll give you a quick overview of what RiverCog is, about the grant that we're applying for, what our proposal is for the grant, and the timeline and next steps. I will kick it off, and then I'll hand it over to Megan to finish up, and then we'll open it up for questions and comments. So, the procedure is gonna be, we're gonna have a brief presentation, we're given overview, and then we're looking for your comments. So, you know, we prepared this slide, I know, being prepared for a very large crowd, you know, so we did, we were thinking of imposing a time limit on speakers. We don't necessarily have to impose a two-minute limit, but please be mindful of the other speakers, and make sure that everyone gets a chance to speak, and we can get home at a reasonable hour. When you recognize, please identify yourself in the town that you're from. And what we'll do is, because this is a hybrid meeting, we will ask questions to the people in the room first, and then people joining us online second. But we'll make sure that there's time for everyone, whether you're in person or you're in via Zoom. The raise-your-hand function is enabled, so please raise your hand, and we'll call on you to speak. And the moderator will read comments from the chat. If you don't feel like speaking, you can type your comments in the chat. All right, so, next slide. So, many of you know who we are, but for those who may not, RiverCog is the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments, and we have seventeen member municipalities. We were created by municipal ordinance by those seventeen municipalities, and we are one of the nine cogs in the state. Every municipality in the state is a member of a cog, and each cog serves one of the state's nine planning regions. And our municipal leaders, the chief elected and the chief executive officials of each of our municipalities, serves on a cog board. I also will add to this that RiverCog has multiple responsibilities. We're responsible for regional planning, but we're also responsible, and that's commenting and helping encourage coordinated land use across municipal boundaries, and avoiding municipal impacts, but we're also a metropolitan planning organization, which is a federal function, which is responsible for programming federal transportation money, and responsible for doing transportation planning for the region. And that designation for RiverCog is actually very important for this grant as well. So, next slide. So, here's a map of our region. It is, here's the seventeen, we're on both sides of the Connecticut River, and in fact, we were organized around the river when we were established in 2012. So, next slide. So, what we're proposing tonight for this grant application will build on previous planning efforts that you may be aware of, you may have actually participated in. So, we're hoping to build upon, first, our Regional Plan of Conservation Development, which was adopted in the fall of 2021, and it identified concerning regional trends, particularly a population decline and aging in our region, a slow job growth, and a lack of housing variety and opportunity, particularly for those younger workers that we want to attract, and those older residents who wanted downsized. The next plan that we completed after that was our 2022 Regional Housing Plan that included twelve municipal annexes to comply with the Affordable Housing Plans required by the State of Connecticut. That plan put each of those municipal annexes in context, and identified housing gaps, needs, and proposed growing the supply in a smart and sustainable way. Now, many of the proposals out there have, you know, have recommended building a lot more housing than we really think we can absorb. So, this was a more nuanced approach. And then, our most recently completed plan is our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy from 2023, and that is our Regional Economic Development Plan, and that identified a lack of housing as a key factor in employee attraction and retention. And I'll throw in one other planning effort. This year, we also updated and adopted a new Metropolitan Transportation Plan, that's a regional transportation plan, and that plan identified opportunities for multimodal connections, increased safety for all users on our transportation networks, and outlined future investments in transportation to support livability and access. So, next slide. So, about the grant that we're applying for. The name of the grant is Pathways to Removing Obstacles to Housing, and the acronym that the feds use is Pro-Housing. And this is a grant being offered by the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development. And the goal of this grant is to identify and remove barriers to affordable housing production and preservation. The grant totals are between a million and ten million, with eighty-five million being given out across the country. The grant comes with a little less than a five-and-three-quarters performance period, round up to six years, for us to do the work. And I think what's important about the grant is, the grant is intended to be, provide planning money to regions and municipalities to be able to find approaches that work for them. There is very little guidance from the feds as to really what they're looking for. They're looking for solutions that work for us, and that will result in progress in finding places where housing can be developed that works for the community. Next slide. The eligibility, this is very important. Eligible entities are state governments, local governments, metropolitan planning organizations like RiverCog, and multi-jurisdictional entities, which is also what RiverCog would qualify as. And we believe that the work we've done through our recent planning efforts, the establishment of a regional housing committee, shows that a strong foundation for regional and multi-municipal cooperation on this issue. And we think that we are in a strong position to potentially win one of these planning grants. Next. Eligible activities include planning and policy activities, that's what we're proposing. It also, you could also use the mic for development activities, infrastructure activities, and preservation activities. Those are not the focus of our grant. We, this is gonna, this is meant to provide capacity to interested municipalities who want to, want to go down this path and create plans for their towns. Next slide. Competitive applicants, so competitive applications would demonstrate progress and commitment to overcoming local barriers to affordable housing production and/or preservation, and acute demand for housing affordable to households with incomes below a hundred percent of area median income. I think we hit both of these quite well with our Regional Housing Committee, and our recent successes implementing our regional housing plan, but also, there is an acute demand for affordable housing to households, and there's acute lack of affordable housing in our region. This is, but I think this needs to be underscored, is what attracted us to this grant application was HUD isn't telling us how to solve the problem, it is giving us the resources for towns to be able to find solutions that work for them. So, next slide. So, do you want me to continue, Megan, or you want to take this? Okay, all right, go ahead.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, now, we're gonna get a little bit into what our approach was for this application. We wanna start out with just a brief explanation of what it is and what it isn't before we get into the details. As Sam sort of foreshadowed, our proposal is a planning effort. It is a town-led process from the bottom up. It's also a regional collaboration between the towns with RiverCog serving as a capacity builder to help the towns achieve their goals. It's also based on previous and widely supported planning efforts, like our Regional Plan of Conservation and Development, our Regional Housing Plan, and our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. What it is not is a proposal to buy or use specific pieces of property. It's also not a specific housing development. It's not a federal or state-led process, even though it is federal funds, and it is not building anything in open space. So, we propose to approach this project in three phases with a fourth kind of concurrent running phase. Phase one would be area selection and land capacity analysis. We propose to select up to six areas, which have not yet been selected, to study for a housing and mixed-use development. The areas that would be selected would be based on the previous planning efforts in the Plan of Conservation and Development and the Regional Housing Plan, which had a very strong focus on infill. There will be a map coming up in a couple of slides for what that work looked like. And what we're also looking for is geographic representation, so we're not focusing all in one town or one part of the region. We would be looking at, you know, both sides of the river, the northern part of the region, central, and the shoreline area. What we would do, once those sites are selected, in partnership with the towns, would be to conduct site-area evaluations to determine what the parameters of the study area would be, and then to conduct an assessment of the amount and the mixture of development that the land could reasonably support. And that would be based on various factors such as the terrain in the area, the availability of infrastructure, what is the septic and water capacity, what are the environmental resources around that area, what is the access to transportation, that type of thing. With that information in mind, we would move on to Phase Two, which is a visioning and public engagement phase. We would conduct robust public engagement throughout this process, both with the public in the towns across the region, and particularly with all of the commissions that have implementing authority over these projects. We would be looking to figure out what people in the towns want to see at the site, what all of the commissions that can implement a proposal could get behind, and whether the proposal is serving the needs of the town and the region for housing. With this information, we would create a variety of build-out scenarios with renderings that would aid in the visioning process, and we would have an engagement session to select the best scenario for the area based on input, and then we would draft a plan based on the scenario that was selected. With the plan, we would then move into Phase Three, which is regulation and implementation. We would review the current regulations that control the study area, and we would see whether or not the vision could be developed based on the current regulations. We would then work with the Planning and Zoning Commission, town staff, to revise the regulations in such a way that would allow the development to occur. And we would work with partners and the town to market the proposal and help to spur the development to occur in accordance with the vision and the new regulations. And concurrently running with this process would be the creation of a regional land bank that would operate in those six areas, at least initially. If it's successful, then maybe it could have the potential to expand, but the idea would be for the land bank to work with particularly brownfield sites, but also maybe foreclosed properties, high-opportunity properties in those opportunity areas where they can clear title, they can clean the site, and they can find partners to develop housing or mixed-use developments in accordance with the vision and the regulations. So, here's the map that I promised. This came out of the Regional Housing Plan. It's actually the same map that's in our Regional Plan of Conservation and Development, just a different consultant spin on the graphics of it. But you can see the areas that we were looking at for higher opportunity, or areas that already had a degree of density and population, that already had certain clusters of industry and jobs, that had access to infrastructure or access to transportation. And this is a very high-level overview of the region. We did not do any sort of site-specific parcel-level analysis about this. This is purely data-driven from a regional perspective, which is why this effort would be building upon this work in heavy partnership with the towns to identify what areas in the towns they would like to see created as sort of these hubs. So, as you can see on the slide, the goal would be to build on the work that was done in the Regional Plan of Conservation and Development and the Regional Housing Plan in partnership with the towns. We would focus on areas identified as high opportunity. We would avoid those areas that have high environmental importance or high natural hazard risk. Most of those were weeded out in this initial effort, but there may be more under these yellow and purple layers that we're not yet aware of. That would be part of the Phase One site analysis. And then, we would want to look at these areas to create or enhance vibrant, mixed-use, walkable, bikeable, interconnected hubs across the region. And this would provide access and opportunity to residents regardless of age, race, ability, or socioeconomic status. So, the timeline and the next steps, we did receive full endorsement, unanimous support from the RiverCog Board for this application as presented. We published the entire application for a fifteen-day public comment period. It is on the website. If anyone would like to provide written comment, we will keep that up longer than the fifteen days, so it will be open until the twenty-seventh. If you'd like to log on, take a closer look at the application, and provide comment that way. We have to put in the application by the thirtieth at eleven fifty-nine fifty-nine, so right before Halloween. And we are here today, obviously, to hear public comment on the application, which will be submitted as part of our application. So, with that, I will open up the public comment period, and we will start with people in the room. And Aliza, would you wanna moderate for us?
Sure. Do the people in the room have anything to comment?
Look, I have one more question is, could you maybe, like, you know, vice-high school teacher, compare and contrast the Regional Affordable Housing Plan, Local Affordable Housing Plan, Thrive, and what this would be doing?
Sure.
Like, context, how do they layer, how do they?
Yeah, absolutely.
Together or against each other?
Sure, hopefully, they don't work against each other. That is not what we're aiming for. So, I guess the first step would be the Regional Plan of Conservation and Development, because that kind of set up the general framework for how we saw land use across the region. So, that was the sustainable, innovative, connected community where we are trying to steer development away from the open space and into kind of the existing centers and areas with capacity. The housing plan was looking at, well, it built on the Regional Plan of Conservation and Development, in that the Plan of Conservation and Development identified housing as a need for attracting population, young people, keeping our seniors aging in place, and just providing more opportunity for our workers as well. So, the housing plan emerged out of the Plan of Conservation and Development. The reason we wanted to look at it at a regional level is because we recognize that each of our towns is very small, not all of them are equally suited for more housing development, some having different capacity than others, some having more jobs, better access to transportation, some having more natural resources than others, and some, you know, having already a higher population of, a higher population, period, full stop. And so, we wanted to look at housing in a regional framework, understanding that there might be better opportunities in different places across the region to provide more housing. The local housing plans are more focused on specific needs in each town. So, while the land use part is part of the overall regional framework, the local plans focus more on the existing gap analysis in the towns, looking more closely at population, who is in town, who is already cost-burdened by their housing, who would qualify for affordable housing, and what the existing number of affordable housing units are. And then, the tools that the towns want to use to create their affordable housing units or increase their supply. There was kind of a feedback loop between that and the Regional Housing Plan, in that one of our recommendations from the Regional Housing Plan was to help the towns implement their plans. So, that's how we came up with the Regional Housing Committee, and we're helping the towns to implement their plans by providing tools and resources and whatnot. Then, so, coming out of that, another recommendation was to look at transit-oriented development opportunities. That was also something flagged in the Regional Plan of Conservation and Development, and it's been kind of trickling down through the plans. So, with the Thriving Communities Program, we finally got the opportunity to look into those, and it's actually a very similar process to what we're proposing for this. We received the Thriving Opportunities Program grant through USCOT to do transit-oriented development plans around the Three Shoreline East Station and the Middletown Transit Terminal. And the way we're proceeding with that, we're working, you know, hand-in-glove with Old Saybrook, Westbrook, Clinton, and Middletown to work through a TOD plan with implementation regulations. And we're starting that with a site-capacity analysis. We're gonna move into a planning process, envisioning process, and then a regulatory sort of audit, I guess, to see what is in the regulations that would prevent the development and try and adjust. That is still in the scoping phase right now, because there's a lot of players that are involved, but it's going very well so far in that we have a lot of technical expertise at the table through that program, and I think it will serve as a good model for what we're proposing here as well, which is looking at creating a similar sort of hub, but just not at the train stations, at other areas throughout the region.
But not excluding the train station?
Not excluding the train stations, but we also don't want to double up if we already have a consultant working on doing TOD around the station.
They may be complementary, not competitive.
Exactly.
But you probably wouldn't do the same, you probably wouldn't do both in the same place.
Right, exactly right. Yeah. I hope that's helpful.
No, no, that's, because I, you know, I know all these things are going on, but is, would, would part of it be identifying sources of investment from state, federal, whatever?
I think that could certainly be part of it. You mean in the implementation phase?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's part of what we're seeing the land bank doing, is leveraging funds to purchase properties so that they can partner with the right developers, or, you know, have an arm that is a developer that can create projects based on the plans.
Thanks, Megan, for the presentation. Thank you, Sam. Looking at this from the perspective of three initiatives that are going on online right now, the first, in roughly chronological order from their inception, we have the Holes Road Initiative, which is a general economic development initiative that's, is well along in the planning process, but a big part of that is gonna be to look at the business districts around Holes Road and add a mixed-use housing dimension to it, and change the form of it, and make it more walkable. That's well along. More recently, the Affordable Housing Commission was stood up that chair, and as you know, we collaborated on the local affordable housing plan and the regional plan. And more recently, there's been another economic development initiative started for the Shoreline Gateway, which is a segment of Shore Road that runs along the Long Island Sound Park of the shore, not the river, and the east-west portion of it. And all of those, we're seeing firsthand and in real time, the very real obstacle that the kind of things that this grant and your proposal for how to address it is real. The planning, the analysis, the communication and engagement, the consideration of environmental factors, and the regulatory and policy aspects, the funding aspects. So, it's a very real obstacle in real time with the earlier projects. We're seeing it right now in trying to get off the ground in some affordable housing projects. Again, those same activities, we're having additional capabilities and funding would be hugely valuable and accelerate the whole, enable and accelerate the whole process. And in terms of the Shoreline Gateway, we see it coming. We're in relatively early phase of that, but we know that's downstream. So, what I can say is, I think it sounds like a great opportunity, and again, from the perspective of online, I can see that one place where it would have been helpful, and two, one that's in real time would be helpful now, and one that will be helpful in the very near future, if not immediately. So, I encourage you to pursue with the grant and hope that it's successful.
Appreciate that.
I also would add that, again, based on firsthand experience with the housing plan and the affordable housing activity you did, I think having a regional dimension to this will add strength to whatever the local plans are.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, no other comment? This is my house, that's why I'm gonna do anything over there.
So, first up, we got Phil Beckman, has his hand raised. We're gonna go ahead and open up the mic for you.
All right, can you hear me? Hi, guys, Phil Beckman here, Essex, Connecticut. I'm also on the Zoning Board of Appeals in town. I think this is really promising. One of the things that was really hopeful was, I think Sam said it, and it might have been on a slide, looking for solutions that work for us, and I know that Suzie and I have talked about this a lot, in that when you give these mandates or these statutes at a state level, one size does not fit all. And you look at the graphic that showed the population centers, we're a very unique area, relatively affluent. I think, I think one of the challenges we're gonna face is a mindset. Recently, with the effort of a developer in Essex that went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, it got voted down, and there were a lot of arguments. There were local groups that got lawn signs. I think the gentleman that spoke to me before started talking about educating and informing people. There's a mindset out there that, a little bit of a NIMBY mindset, people look for a lot of excuses, why not to do this? So, I think that the biggest challenge is gonna be education and marketing on this one. Just my comments. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Debbie. I can open up the mic for you. Or I can read your question. Oh, there you are.
Oh, hi, thank you, sure. So, I'm interested in asking about the Phase Two interaction with the region and the grant folks and the townspeople. I think we all agree that we could use some affordable housing, but we, you know, like Phil said, we wanna, we wanna do it our way, because we think we know, you know, better than somebody up in Hartford. So, one of the questions that we've asked before, when this has been presented to Planning and Zoning, which I'm an alternate on in East Adam, is, would we still be eligible for this type of grant money if we requested that we kind of serve our own citizens first as a priority before we would market as the HUD website request to minority markets? before we would market as the HUD website request to minority markets? Would that nullify it?
So there's a couple of pieces to that. The first is, I think you were thinking of HUD-administered programs like vouchers and whatnot. But what we're proposing for this grant funding, if we receive it, is to create a plan. So we're creating plans, not a specific development, so there wouldn't be any, there wouldn't be anything to prioritize, I suppose, at that stage.
I'm not sure if I'm explaining myself or making myself clear. I, I looked up the HUD website about eligibility for the grant, and one of the requirements, if you're a recipient of this grant money, is that if they assist you with the resources to create the affordable housing, that you must demonstrate that you have advertised and marketed to outside markets beside your, your own town. So, you know, we're, we're the stakeholders, and I think they would like to feel that we can help our own, you know, charity begins at home kind of mindset. We have a lot of eligible people. Okay, thanks, Sam.
Yeah, I can, I can respond that. So if you remember the slide that I showed in, in earlier with the four different eligible categories, three of them is actually more construction-oriented. So if you use this money to, let's say, build housing, they do expect you, there are strings attached. But we're not proposing, we're not proposing to build housing with this money. This money will, will be used to create local plans. And I don't, I, I would be highly doubtful that, you know, implementation of that plan at a later date would have any connection to those strings.
Okay, I misunderstood. I thought that they, we would get resources to not only plan, but actually use toward actual construction or, or so, so forth. But I misunderstood, so thank you for that clarification, Sam.
Yeah, because, because we're looking to help of six, up to six towns and six sites. That money gets spread out pretty thin, and so...
Right.
Yeah, so, so it's, so in reality, we, yeah.
Mudus is very small. The most we could hope for is a minimum at 1 million. So I guess you're suggesting that would be taken up with mostly the planning stages for multi-use in, in Mudus?
Oh, 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 no. Oh, that's, that's the second part of the question. So the second part of the question is, could, could East Haddam go on its own and apply? The answer is yes, although the deadline to, to be able to, so this is part of the required public comment period that, that is a, is a requirement of the grant. And this grant was announced in September with a October 30th due date. So the grant had to be completely, it had to be a draft, had to be fully written, and then put out for public comment, and then that had to be concluded by the submission date of October 30th. So they really did not give us or anyone in this country very much time to fulfill this. So, so in the future, East Haddam could go on its own. We believe that a multi-jurisdictional approach, the regional approach, would be potentially more attractive to get, and maybe more successful in getting the funds. But, but yeah, East Haddam in a future round could pursue this on the run.
I, I misunderstood. I thought that we could possibly be one of six opportunity zones as part of this grant. Did I misunderstand that?
Right, but, so, so it wouldn't be a million dollars per site. We're not, we're not asking for 6 million dollars. I don't know if, Megan, you have a budget slide?
I don't have a budget slide. There is a budget in the grant application, but I can tell you that we are asking for about 2 million for the entire project. So RiverCog would be the grant recipient, and we would basically be capacity builders for the towns. So we would work with, you know, the grant administrators. We would procure the consultants with a panel, obviously, of representatives from the towns that we would be working with and kind of handle that aspect.
Oh, okay, so I, I guess I saw a bunch of numbers. I thought the grant would be for River, Connecticut, for our cog, for 80 million. And each of the six could get one to 10. So I saw those numbers somewhere. I'm like, oh, those are very nice numbers.
I would have liked that, too.
I, I wish we had that. It's 85 million nationwide, so this, this is still... Yeah, so we, we think we're in a good position to apply, but, you know, this is still a long shot, so...
Right, right, okay. I misunderstood the numbers. I thought it was at least state, possibly regional, but yeah, that's pretty thin then. Okay, never mind.
Do you have any other?
Does anybody else online want to make a comment or ask a question? You can just raise your hand.
Hearing none?
All right.
Anyone in the room? Follow-up?
You had mentioned brownfields. Could you explain where you're going with it? I mean, I've dealt with industrial site within Eeler and, you know, just know that, a no to, a no to people is, is a pretty strong no from DEEP.
Yeah, so what we were thinking with the brownfield sites is we know, just from talking with towns, that a lot of areas where they would like to see development happen, they say, if only we could get this brownfield site taken care of. If only we could clean up the site and, and get it marketed. So what we were thinking was, we could analyze as part of the Phase One, what is actually going on with the site? And then as part of a Phase Four, if we had a land bank potentially purchase and clean the site so that it could be used. That is about the end of my technical knowledge on brownfield sites. That's why we would hire a consultant. Hope that answered the question at least somewhat.
Yeah, so really not, not too much of a plan. Find, find out what it takes.
Right, find out what it takes, and if possible, use the land bank to, to fix it.
I would like just to add, in regard to the budget, we are, in order to try to get more points in the application, we are putting forward in our application a cash from RiverCog. We had some money that we had identified for our Regional Plan of Conservation and Development that we remarked for that, but we didn't end up using. And so we, we go, we're proposing tomorrow to our board to commit that, that, that money, 105,000 dollars towards this project if we win the grant. And I think that will help us gain some more points and maybe be more successful.
Any other questions or comments? Last call? All right, I suppose with that, I will close the public hearing. The, as I mentioned before, the comments page will still be open on the RiverCog website. If you want to go take a look at the application and add your comments, all the comments will be submitted as part of our application package.
And I want to encourage you, if you would like to send a letter of support, that please, please feel free to do so. We can, we can help you with, with some suggestive language if you, if that would be helpful. We've actually been really impressed by the support that we've received statewide, from statewide organizations in, for this application. So we're very excited, enthusiastic, and we think we have a chance, so... So if you would like to lend, you know, your, your support to this, please, please consider sending us a letter of support, and we can, we can tell you the format that is, that we suggest.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, thanks.
Thank you.